To approve a budget request for Human Services for mailing equipment. I don't think we have an addition and then Steve brought up he wants to for now, hold back on number 10, he wants to discuss that. So if with those changes, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Oh, look what happened to my shirt.
All right.
Oh, that's Steve. All those in favor say aye. Okay, District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four is me, I and five.
Aye.
All right. All right, relative to number 10, Steve, did you want to talk about it now or wait later in the agenda?
Well, I guess either or, if we do it now or wait till Environmental Services is on.
How much information do you need?
Um, I think Environmental Services gathered some questions or answered some questions they had.
Okay, so should we wait? What's your recommendation?
Yeah, I'd say wait till then.
Okay, we'll wait and discuss number 10 under Environmental Services. Uh, time out, make a note quick. Number 10. Okay, uh, that's progress. The nine oh five item is a COVID update. We have a presentation from Aaron Tufti and Dr. George Morris. Are those folks ready to go?
Hello, this is Dr. Morris is there? Is my coming through with my sound?
Yes, you are.
Oh, great. Um, thank you. And Aaron, I'm, Aaron also available?
Yes, I am here this morning as well.
Great. Aaron, do you want to get us started? And then I, I do have a few slides, you know, maybe some information to send. We can go from there.
Fantastic. I sure can. Good morning. Aaron Tufti from Emergency Management. And we have Dr. Morris with us this morning from Central Care, who is the Incident Commander for the response to our COVID-19 situation. And he is here to share some information with you about what Central Care is doing and some of the trends we're seeing in Minnesota, maybe around the country. And he was gracious enough this morning to put together a short presentation to update you on where things are at.
Thank you, and I hope update goes both ways. Aaron, thank you. And Commissioners, thank you for everything you do for our communities. I will try now to, let's see, this is one. And I'm going to try and put it into the view so that you can see the entire screen, looking at a PowerPoint that should be blue, Central Care COVID Update. Great. So as Aaron said, I'm George Morris, I'm Vice President for Performance Excellence. And then since January, I've been our physician and some commanders. This has been a long road with COVID, much as you're also aware. We thought we'd give you a little bit of some highlights and also lowlights, just to recognize that. So this is some of the recent data, and we track and we try to make our informed decisions on that. And what you can see on the upper left is Stearns County compared to Minnesota. Now, this is what we'd call a daily count, daily tracking count. So you can see each day what the new cases are. And when I look at this, what I see is we had our big peak, you know, now since you talked about that wave flattening the curve. But before we were done with it, the second wave hit, both for Minnesota, the country, and even in Stearns County. It's not as high, it's, you know, but it's lasting. So we're kind of seeing what's the second wave, second surge hit for us. The one on the upper right just shows a little bit of the total kind of case counts. Where again, we saw that really steep curve plateaued a little bit in Stearns County, but then certainly rising up also. Middle is our death rate. This is a, you know, tragic disease, tragic condition. We had higher cases, Minnesota also. But for the group of 30 days, we have not had a death for a Stearns County resident. Now, we know that that, we will celebrate that, and we know that we're not done with this. We're trying to keep track of all these factors, information that kind of helps us, you know, gauge the lay of the land and how we're responding. Slide.
Excuse me, I'd like to ask a question here. That, I mean, that's a phenomenal statistic. We have no deaths in the last 30 days. How do we explain that? I mean, is it because of good treatment? I mean, I, I, why, why is it that all of a sudden, you know, we're not seeing the impact that we saw perhaps earlier?
A couple. Thank you, Commissioner. Good question. One is you might, our rates, our case fatality rate in Stearns County has been much lower than the rest of the state of Minnesota and even the nation. I think I have one more slide that might kind of help demonstrate a little bit of why, why I think that's happening. Our average age or our, you know, that range of patients is lower in Stearns County than it is for much of the rest of Minnesota and much of the rest of the nation. And we do know that there are fewer deaths in younger patients. So that death rate, while still it's a serious condition and we track it and we care about it, we do see that it's less fatal in the younger crowd. Hope that partially answers it. And I have another graphic later on that I think should help give you some numbers along with that. Does that kind of help, Commissioner?
It does, but then let me give credit perhaps where it's due. Does that mean that we're doing perhaps a good job in our care facilities by keeping it out?
I think I'd give credit to three main areas, yes. Our skilled nursing, long-term care facilities have had lower case rates, case incidence than much of the rest of the state. So we are protecting our most vulnerable. Another thing we're doing is as a county is we're educating, you know, we're helping people know the simple, you know, four or five things to do to decrease the chance of getting one. And then we do have some good clinical care programs, you know. So when people are sick, we've been able to provide high-level care, which you might say is what we expect for Central Minnesota. And, um, you know, our role for Central Care is to provide that if the other factors don't work, we're here as the backup plan with good treatment protocols.
Okay, thank you very, very well.
Thank you. Um, let's see, good questions, and thank you. Please continue those. I do hope that this is a discussion and not just a slide presentation. This, a lot of what we've done has been working with Aaron and our, you know, County Public Health and other, you know, community agencies, ensuring that that public messaging, common purpose is out there and that we really identified those specific communities of need. We know there have been targeted approach at the meat processing, our approach for a place of hope homeless population, realizing that childcare became a big issue also in a risk population. But to ensure that those medical employees have childcare services for their family members so that they can be on the job. We also know the tragic death of George Floyd and the response, you know, there were more of the protests. I would describe them here as either celebrations, recognitions, or demonstrations. How we manage those as a county to help decrease a surge, I think also helped us out. We've done a lot of the targeted hotspot work, both with the state MDH and with County Public Health, Aaron and the rest of her team to try and keep those hotspots, either a small smolder or a very contained small group. I think those are the additional things, you know, Commissioner Persky, that have helped us out. This is, you know, I pulled this off of the Stearns County Public Health. And I know perhaps in your mind, you can picture where your ward, where your district sit on those. As I look at it, I see a bunch of communities with various rates of COVID within them. This is a zip code based one. I really like this because it lets you really dive into which specific areas. And as we look at this, I'd say, you know, we could assume it's all about St. Cloud, but it's not. It's, you know, you can see St. Cloud, Wake Park, Sartell, you know, St. Stephen, down along the river, more in the rural communities, they're all impacted to some extent. You know, and that this is why I really appreciate looking at this from the county level. Though I also know that COVID really doesn't care about maps, you know, they do follow people and geographic filters. But the borders, that's all us kind of drawing things on. But I think they help us target. This is a slide that I think that might also help kind of show a little bit of perhaps if we have a lower case fatality rate, you know, than the rest of the state of Minnesota. This is the age-adjusted death incidence or case fatality rate. So if you take, and the highest risks are indigenous, you know, Native Americans and Alaska indigenous populations and blacks. So if you smoothed out the ages for all of those, you know, it is deadlier in our indigenous populations and our blacks along with the Asians. And then the white population is a much lower death rate. Now, there are more Caucasians in Minnesota and Stearns County. So we know that the numbers are higher, but it's that incidence or that case fatality rate that I think is something that we track. And as we've seen here, our ethnicity, you know, skew is a little bit more Caucasian, not completely. We certainly have blacks, Latino, Latinx, Latino populations to track. As you see on the bottom part, when you, when they get the cases, there is a high death rate. So that's this bottom graph. What I see with the Caucasian is we have so many of the Caucasian patients that are in that elderly, those long-term care facilities. When they get it, it's deadly. We really need to protect that long-term care, senior citizen, senior population, while realizing the disparities that it hits with. And that's kind of why we really have to work with public health for those strategies, I think. I might pause here. This sometimes makes me think a little bit, this one, and I'll see what, what's a brief thought from anybody here.
All right, I have some question or eight question for you to comment on. This is Jeff Mergan. I have an article from CDC recently released some statistics that said it's likely that greater than 10 times more infections occurred than their cases reported. And so there are so many people that had it and didn't even know that they had it because their symptoms were so minor. And could you comment on the infection fatality rate, the IFR, based on all of those statistics? Do you have anything like that calculated? The article I have has it calculated at point 3% if, if the CDC information is accurate.
Uh, thank you. And that's kind of where you'd say an incidence fatality rate is a population-based number. How many people are there? Case fatality rate is how many cases did you identify that then resulted in a death? And so if we have challenges in identifying cases, it's going to shift that number from currently 3.4% down to 0.34. One way that is perhaps a way to keep that in, keep that in mind is we look at comparing COVID to influenza. And I think that's been a common comparison. If you compare the incidence fatality rate of COVID, even if you assume 10 times as many, so you put 0.34, we have to do that same thing to the influenza death rate, which then shifts the deadliness of influenza, it's like 0.01. So it just moves all the decimal points, you know, one over. And it still shows that COVID, in essence, is, you could say, 10 times or 30 times higher than flu. So I agree, Commissioner Mergan, you'd call out, we have to be careful about our terms. Are we talking incidence fatality rate, more population, or case fatality rate, which is the cases that we've identified, how many of them had died? Does that help?
Yes, I just, I think the only thing they ever talk about, if it's even mentioned, is the case fatality rate, not the infection fatality rate.
Yep, the case fatality rate is a common one, but certainly we track that incidence fatality rate or deaths per 100,000. And even this graph, you could say this information is death per 100,000 residents. So this information calculates it based on per 100,000 Minnesotans, you know, per 100,000 residents. So these numbers are much more in that kind of level where it's like 0.1 per 100,000 residents, which is still a staggering number when compared with other infectious conditions, diseases, you know, that we all kind of deal with.
And right now, Corey, I have that same, I have it on a national level, and I think Minnesota is currently, I didn't count them, but I think it's 23rd.
Uh, we're around that, kind of that mid twenties, you know, kind of area. And we've gone up and down a little bit, you know, for, for our, our deaths. Thank you. Let me try to think of, this is another one, I think, that kind of helps show that, that age. This is from MDH showing the red line here. This is the age range of cases, you know, from zero to 100 plus. So you could see the bulk of the numbers are in the middle ages in the red line. So that relative percentage of the younger population is getting this. And that's another thing that recently we're all seeing is as the younger people get it, you, we will likely see that fatality rate drop. The cases are still going to go up. What we want to be careful of is the, what I would call that delayed surge. If the younger people get it, and then if they spread it to the elderly because they work at a long-term care or because they have relatives that are in there, it's going to be that spread. So that second spread is really risky. The bar graph on the right kind of show you a little bit of our data for Central Care of our age range. We really haven't seen, we started out younger, you know, in these twenties to thirties, that's the blue and the green graph even back in May. We had a fairly significant portion of the twenties and thirty-year-olds that had it. And we stayed pretty consistent with that, you know, as far as our percentage of cases. We had a little shift recently from thirties to twenties, you know, but largely we've had a younger group bound to have cases.
Dr. Morris is Steve Natch. Say, is there, has this, is this a similar correlation to when like SARS and MERS and some of these other ones came into play?
I think, I think I'll show you. I have one that's a good question. Can I just fold that? I have a nice picture that talks about SARS and MERS in relationship with COVID. That's a good question, since they're all in that same family. Uh, let me see, I'll quickly get to that. I'll kind of zip through some of the other ones. You know, as we talk about masking and testing, testing is another challenge. We've recently, we're all experiencing across the nation and the world restrictions on our supplies. And this is a challenge that we're seeing. We're really pushing for, there's no benefit to retesting. If you've been identified, you've been identified. It doesn't help to do serial testing. Serial testing can't clear you to get back to work or anything else like that. We're really using time and symptom-based strategies to help out with that. We went from having enough supplies to test over 350 people at our facility per day. We're down to less than 120. So just really tight. So we have to think about testing as a part of the program, you know, these six steps that are really important to kind of keep this kind of settled down.
Quick question with the testing. Does that include all tests in our area or specifically the tests that you, that Central Care is able to do?
Uh, we have three different categories of testing. Good question, Commissioner. We can do 20 tests within one or two hours. We can do about 120 tests. I call them a quick turnaround, six to 18 hours. And then we can send out tests to Mayo or MDH. Those send-out tests, we used to get results back within a day. It's five to six days. So even though I know we can send them out after five to six days, it's, how am I, how can I make my clinical decisions based on that delay? So this turnaround time, more initials that we're already all learning, TAT, turnaround time for test results is really a struggle to help our clinicians make those good decisions.
Thank you. That's actually been a real concern I've been hearing from a number of people.
That delay is just really hard, and it's a, it's due to national shortages, not just of the reagents, the chemicals. But strangely enough, even these small, little plastic pipette tips. And to think that our machines are shut down because we can't get small, little plastic pipette tips is astounding to me. We've got our supply chain and we've identified, you know, certainly areas where it's broken. You know, we, we should be able to solve these problems. We've just, everybody is struggling with that, including Mayo, University of Minnesota, Hennepin County, all the big players. We're on, actually, last week I think I had five meetings with them to talk about testing strategies.
Do, do different testing sites have different response times? Because I know of an individual that was sent in to be tested and got the results back within 22 hours.
Uh, yes, different types, test types and different test facilities. You know, we can get some of our tests turned around quickly. It's just many of them that are, these send-outs are really delayed. I also know even places where they're sending them to national labs, you know, we think about Quest, LabCorp. Those places are even having long delays. It's very spotty, so that inconsistency. Today, I might get 12 hours. I send it in tomorrow, it might be five days. It's really hard to manage that as a true way to base your clinical decisions, much less public health and population health decisions, that I know we also work with Aaron and Melissa and the rest of her team. Good questions. You guys are, we're all thinking the same way. I really like to hear that. I, the hard part is, is how can we get some answers? I'll kind of skip through this one again, just an example where even, you know, for our business decide is we're still trying to follow the social distancing guidelines. We haven't been doing big conferences. We're doing small events. We've had to change our CME. You know, we know we're doing things with a lot of those in-person safety protocols, much like all businesses in town are. So even this is kind of a challenge for us. This is the one, I think, Commissioner Natch, that might kind of help out. This is when I talk about treatment. And what I'll say on this graph, if the graph tells a picture, this graph tells a picture on what's called the fatality rate scale goes up and down. The infection rate or this R naught, in other words, how contagious is it? Goes a little bit more here on the X-axis. So you can see here measles is very contagious. We all talk about that, that if you get measles in a room, you know, you're going to spread it around. Chickenpox, kind of more middle, you know, common cold, very contagious, but doesn't kill people. Whereas you could see here, you know, SARS and MERS, they were kind of in this, less than one. One is, you know, a designator here for infection rate, but very deadly. SARS, you know, kind of similar, deadly, a little bit contagious. Interesting things about SARS and MERS, when you had it, you got sick pretty quickly. So people knew it, and that's another way that those, I don't think they spread as much because there were fewer cases of that pre-symptomatic and that asymptomatic spread. So the, if you had it, you had it quickly, you got sick, you survived or unfortunately died. You know, and that was a challenge. This novel coronavirus, this COVID, kind of sits in this mid-range where it's, whether you want to call it a sweet spot or an awful spot where it's, has a significant fatality rate, you know, higher than swine flu, not as high as the Spanish flu from 1918 yet. But its infectivity rate is much more, much higher than like seasonal flu or other ones.
So SARS and, the SARS and MERS had a higher mortality rate?
Uh, yes, they, they were very awful conditions. They, but they didn't. Uh, they didn't spread throughout the world. Remember this, these were global pandemics, even SARS and MERS. Part of it was due to they had a really good containment strategy at the time. They had good ways to identify cases and keep them there. Most people tended to, when they got sick, they got sick and they knew it. And we knew it so that we could, you know, contain them. Whereas now, people are experiencing the COVID-19, the containment strategy wasn't as effective. And people were in that pre-symptomatic asymptomatic spread, you know, Commissioner, much like you said, 10 times as many potentially that we're seeing. So a lot of people are spreading it without knowing it. Um, and then I just listed a few of the treatments. We really are, you know, using our, our quality and skilled people here to identify what's, what are the best treatments and put them in place. So a lot of the things that you may read about or hear about, a couple of these are even research studies, you know, these are all research-based kind of treatments. And our team here is involved in evaluating them and participating in those trials and treatment strategies. That might be, oh, this is just a little bit now to think forward. What we were kind of talking about, what we're doing is we're trying to see the long term. So we've kind of looked at ourselves as we need a long-term strategy because we also know that we're, our term is this road to recovery. In other words, we get back to some regular business while we pay attention to COVID-19. So that's kind of why we've looked at it as, we know we need a team dedicated to COVID-19 and the impacts. And we need a team dedicated to, how do we let people know it's safe? How do we let people know we can do procedures effectively and safely? And we have to keep, you know, the, keep the lights on, keep the business running and keep ensuring people get the healthcare needs. Otherwise, we're going to see those deaths just due to delays in care. And we're trying to minimize that with our team. So that's kind of where this is just a little picture to let you know kind of going forward to how we're going to look at things that are in the middle overlap and things that you might say have one or the other. I think a lot of the reasons why we're doing this is because we've taken the time to look at the mirror. You know, this is old MC Escher, you know, kind of, we're using this as, not so much as a crystal ball, but now it's been our opportunity to look at what we've done, look at our response and think about, so how do we do it better? Um, you know, Escher's drawing, if you're also familiar with his work, he's got a little crazy bent to it. I'm not saying that we're doing it and trying to think crazy, but we need to think differently. And I think that's been a key strategy is let's be creative, find the problem, and then get a team ready to solve it. This has been our opportunity as we've kind of been a little bit of this lull to kind of look back and reflect and see what we can do next.
Dr. Morris, I don't know if this is the time to ask. I was going to wait till the very end to ask you to look into the crystal ball. Because.
Commissioner, I got it right here.
All right, then, then here's my questions. You know, look, looking forward especially for the schools, for the sports, both at, you know, the, the local public schools as well as the colleges, dorms, cafeterias, even pro sports, you know, we saw the, you know, a couple of professional sports teams, you know, come to an end just yesterday. Where are we going to be going, you think, in the next month or so?
Uh, that's good. Short-term and long-term prediction. I, I might be easier to say my long-term prediction is we're going to be living with this for a while, 18 months. So we have to figure out a way to live with this start-stop or this stuttering kind of way to keep moving forward. I think the schools can open. I think we have to identify protocols to do it as safe as possible, realizing nothing is 100% safe. I think that, I know the Department of Education is coming up with plans. I've seen colleges, you know, they all have plans nationally. You know, there are some good plans. I know some are individually making it as a decision, just go all virtual. I, I think in-person school can be done safely and in-person is very important for kids and adult development. So I'm supportive of that, and I want to make sure we do it as safe as possible. And that is going to be the key. So how can we identify those factors that are really going to be key safety issues? The sports ones is, is a real challenge because there are different levels of sports that in all honesty are too high a risk. And the testing that they're taking away from patients concerns me. I, now, my challenge is, is that I think if you lump all sports together, like all high school sports or all NCAA sports together, and you just say go, no-go, or shut them all down, I think that loses the opportunity for some people to be active, sports-related, and do some things in as safe a way as possible. Easy comparison is cross-country running versus football. You want to go run, go run. There are ways for your team to do it safely. And I think that I would try to, if we can work with our school systems, our youth and our team sports, to try and do it as safe as possible, I'm a big advocate for that. I know NSIC just delayed their season. That might give us another month to kind of develop better testing and understand what it means to Major League Baseball or NFL to have on again, off again. And every week it's going to be different. That's my short-term prediction for the next month, is we're going to have to figure out that every week a team or a sport is going to go on, off, on, off.
Could I, could I ask a follow-up question about schools?
Uh, yes, please.
Um, mostly because, uh, while we clearly are not a school board, we've got public listening and we. Mostly because, um, uh, while we clearly are not a school board, we've got public listening and we have a number of people who either live multi-generationally with people who are perhaps more vulnerable from an age standpoint or family members who come in contact with others who, you know, who are vulnerable, right? So whether it's teachers or, or kids, and I think we all would like to see our schools be able to return and at least our area is not in a high, you know, we're not a hotspot at the moment, right? What are the things that you think need to happen to protect not just those who are in the schools, but those vulnerable folks who they very well may either live or come in contact with, because part of it's a resource question, even the county, we're, we're getting questions from school districts and certainly the state and the feds are looking at what resources are needed. But just your thoughts about that, what's actually needed?
Yeah, Commissioner Clark, I think that's a good question and I, um, you know, I am an advocate for schools to be in session. How we do it is going to be the challenge and there are patients, both kids and, um, adults that work there or that teach there, uh, that likely should not be on site. You know, and, and so these hybrid models where you could say if it is better for the child to be off-site, let's accommodate that. If it's better for the teacher or a staff member to be off-site, how do we identify accommodations for that? Uh, and I think the struggle will be that there's any, a system level, we need to put in place some guardrails. And then individually identify, you know, workplace accommodations. Does it make sense for you to be there? And if the answer is no, then well, okay, what adaptive strategy can we put in place? And I, I like how you call out that that puts a lot of stress both on our public health and our private. You know, uh, Bright Ideas Daycare might be a private company, but how do we depend on them as part of a, a strategy to help support people with this? Meals, you know, uh, meals via schools has been a common way to help feed kids that might be at risk. What strategy do we have to get those to homes? If they don't have the bandwidth to do online learning, but we know that medically it's safer for them to be at home. How do we help support that? And those are big issues that I know, um, MDE, Department of Education, uh, local school districts. We were invited, we had the opportunity to talk to our superintendents a week or two ago. These are big issues. Um, I, I would like to see a, a plan. And then with that individual flexibility that we need to, a risk-based strategy. I hope that helps.
It does. Thank you.
I have a question from kind of a different angle here. I was wondering, have you looked at any of the research on what the negative effects of wearing a mask are? I personally have a relative that has, is forced to wear a mask at work and now has developed some serious respiratory problems from, uh, inhaling the just exhaled CO2. So I was wondering what your comments were on that.
Yep. Uh, thank you. I, I have, I've looked at, most recently we looked at over, now it's up to at least 20, you know, 25 studies looking at safety of masks for their use and safety of masks, I might say more in that occupational USHA type world. Now I fully recognize I'm not an occupational medicine doctor and we should take my advice and my opinions as my advice and my opinions. As I've reviewed it, there are no harmful effects for retained CO2 in appropriate use of safe respirators. Respirators and this includes SCUBA, you know, I also had qualifications as, uh, you know, a Navy guy. So we dealt with SCUBA medicine, diet medicine, uh, worked in occupational health areas. And that when appropriately safely, masks are safe, they're effective and they protect people. We also know that masks can help decrease the spread of infection infectious particles. That doesn't mean they have to be small enough to be micron size. They just need to disrupt the airflow and disrupt the flow of the liquid that the virus moves in and they help people safe. But to, to my knowledge, I understand that's not perfect, uh, that there are not serious adverse effects from appropriate use of masking and respirators.
So it's all in your head?
No, I, I don't agree with that. I'd say, as I tried to say is there's how you use a respirator, there are certain criteria for numbers of minutes, numbers of hours, level of it, you know, are you getting exposed to the fumes other ways? Uh, we do know asbestos, you know, tricked a lot of people, uh, toxic fumes and chemical plants. Those are nasty. So if they're using it in a work environment, I think that should be a work-related issue. For, uh, and respirators and masks are different. Cloth masks, no retained CO2. You know, so there's a little bit of different cloth face covering than common masks that we're all using. We're in the healthcare field using more word called surgical masks. Or in 95 respirators when needed or higher level pappers, when we use them safely, they're effective and safe.
Dr. Morris, a question going back to your, um, the, the ethnicity charts you have where the indigenous people and blacks had a higher death rate. Is there any correlation to like immunizations, you know, childhood immunization or immunizations in general?
I've, I've looked at a couple brief studies. Thank you, Commissioner, on that question. And there are the rates have not shown clear, if you don't get these shots, you will suffer more adverse consequences. So I haven't seen that one yet, but we're kind of keep tracking on that one. We are encouraging people to get their immunizations even now, you know, during COVID. We've set up processes where they can just drive up. Don't even have to come in the clinic. If you're worried about coming in the clinic, drive up and we'll get you your, uh, your shots and vaccines. There are a couple of research studies looking at boosting people, even adults with an immunization to see if that will trigger a better immunization, a better response, help protect them against COVID. I, I think that research is still, should be fleshed out a little bit more before we're going to jump on board saying, just give everybody an MMR booster. We're, we're not ready to do that yet.
Okay, thanks.
As, as a general statement, my unprofessional opinion is the better your state of health, uh, the less at risk you are. And if you've got your immunizations in order, to the extent they're available, your risk is lower. Cause you're in better shape and a story.
Uh, uh, thank you. I think that's a good way. We like to talk about, um, common wisdom, you know, look at yourself. Are you healthy? Uh, what can you do to improve your health? We know that a lot of the chronic underlying conditions do make it more serious if you get COVID. I haven't seen something that says you're more at risk of getting the virus, but it's just if you get the virus and you have chronic medical conditions, it's more serious, more severe, longer term and harder for us to help you out. So this is a good time to say, what can we do to promote health in our, in our region, in our county?
So it sounds too like, I know that, um, this is an area that together we, we focus on, how are we, excuse me, helping people have the understanding and sometimes tools, uh, to have, um, the best health and, uh, let's face it, sometimes as individuals, we haven't always paid attention to that. Um, but we also have pretty significant health disparities, which I think relate to somewhat to both Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Notch's questions, um, which could, if somebody, um, gets this, could make it more challenging for them or, or impact the board to get through it. But then on the inverse side, we also have some people who are just free of any underlying conditions that either have gotten very sick and died or more in general, thinking about some of the young adults understandably wanting to congregate more closely in bars. Who are thinking, hey, I don't have anything to worry about, but could end up being asymptomatic and pass it on. So we have to be careful of that as well, correct?
I, I thank you, Commissioner. I think that's a good comparison. We've had people in their twenties in the hospital, on ventilatory support. You know, seriously, we've had young people in Minnesota die and this is the challenge of that sense of inability due to my age or my health status is not there. Common cold, yep, fine, you're going to get through that. Most likely influenza, yep, we're going to get through that. COVID does not seem to be doing that. We do have the, um, serious cases from it and we're still looking at, well, what is the long-term damage to a person's lung? If they're 18 and they get this, what does that mean for their potential respiratory status going forward? Uh, we don't know enough yet. This is now a virus that might be, you know, eight months old for our, you know, current knowledge base. So those are good questions about how do we spread that message? That, uh, while you may think that you're, um, safe, it's a relative safety and we're still trying to figure out that long-term effect. If you're okay, I, I might take one more question. I gotta, I'm in, uh, we, I was appreciated your time today. Uh, I have a couple, uh, patients kind of, um, over my corner. I'll go take care of them, uh, you know. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, if you have any other questions, I, I can be available. And I know Aaron, we're, we're working very closely with the county public health department, Melissa and Aaron, uh, are some of our key contacts. We will continue that and I'd love to be able to share a story a few months from now about how we might be through this a little bit easier.
Last question is, what's your organization?
Uh, Commissioner, could you, could you repeat that one more time? I heard
Well, yeah, what's your organizational title?
Well, I'm sorry, uh, Vice President for Performance Excellence.
Now I know as much as before I asked the question. Tell you what, Doc, let's conclude here. We've got a minor emergency on our end. We're not broadcasting, so we're gonna be taking a break here while they get after the equipment in the back room. And, uh, we'll, uh, round up the Mustangs, uh, when we got something figured out here and we can proceed. Thank you, Doctor Morris.
Thanks, Doctor Morris. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Give her a go. Okay, they think they got us fixed.
Okay, she should go back on.
Yeah.
Everybody still there? I think we're fixed.
Okay. I'll redo my impression of herding the cats. Can we get folks back together?
We can't see you, Lee.
Oh, well. How's that?
There you go.
Okay. Steve? First to Steve.
Yep.
Okay, good. All right. I guess we're all here. Wait a minute. Joe is outrunning laps.
Joe, are you there? We can see him.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, we'll get back underway. The next agenda item now we're broadcasting is a public hearing. For, from St. Joseph. Shelley, are you with us? Shelley, take up your agenda item.
We can't hear you, Shelley.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Okay, the first agenda item is for Saponiacs is not actually a public hearing. It is an enactment of an ordinance. There was an error, but Angie Berg can address that issue.
Morning Commissioners, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. This item was heard by the Stearns County Planning Commission at their meeting last week, and it is for approximately 52 acres to be rezoned from agricultural 40 to residential 10. And the rezoning is located in Section 23 St. Wendell Township. The Planning Commission did recommend approval on a five to two vote, recommending approval to the county commissioners. And your findings, or their findings of fact, rather, are listed on package page 307. If the board would like to concur with the majority of the Planning Commission, you would be looking to approve the rezoning and enact the amending ordinance.
All right. Any discussion by board members? If not, is there a motion to approve, deny, on pass or kick?
Just input before we make a motion. We, you know, we can, that was a five to two vote. The Planning Commission, you know, made all the visits. They continue to struggle with the direction that St. Wendell is taking on land use. Angie and I hope to be attending a township meeting here this next month to maybe get a better handle on that. But basically, it continues to be, as we've seen maybe over the past few months, of splitting up Ag 40 into, you know, 10-acre parcels. And just wondering about the appropriateness of the planning with that. That's why we have the two opposing votes on that, on the Planning Commission.
Any other questions, comments, whatever? Observations? The only observation I've had, I would have, is that's not a phenomenon of the last several months. That's a phenomenon in the last several decades. The, a particular township has not had a consistent perspective on this. But at the same time, that has some merit because as they eventually get around to pointing out, is every situation is different. So with that, any other discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve? Deny? They should probably take some action.
I'll move that through.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Any other discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Roll call, District 1.
Aye.
District 2.
With a split decision, I will vote aye within my head, that decision. I'm voting aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4? Aye. District 5?
Aye.
Joe split his head. Okay. The next item?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yep, the next item is our comprehensive plan. Sorry. We are looking to approve.
Time out, Shelley. Procedurally, I dropped the ball. This was a public hearing. I didn't close the public hearing. We voted. I think this will be a petition. Was it a public hearing? Okay, good.
Correct. So the comprehensive plan will be a public hearing. And I just wanted to thank the public and the Planning Commission and the county board for all your dedicated effort. And we do have Lance Bernard, who can present the information related to our comprehensive plan and the website. And we will proceed with this public hearing.
Okay. We're going to conduct a public hearing on the comp plan and ordinance 603. Shelley, would you like to walk us through this? Or Angie?
We will have Lance Bernard walk us through, who is our consultant.
Can you see the PowerPoint? Okay, can you hear me okay, guys?
Yes, but it sounds like you're testing jet engines in the background.
Yeah. Something here? Are you guys okay if I keep proceeding, or do I need to adjust something here?
That's what you could possibly adjust. We'll put up with this.
Okay, well, let me start off as I move into a different room that may have a little bit better sound quality than where I'm sitting right now. I apologize for that. So hopefully this clears things up a little bit for the group, and you can hear me a little bit better. I apologize for that. So I will start things off.
I'm gonna try shutting my cell phone.
Okay.
Is that better? Do I have Doctor Wood? Well, I can't very well turn my cell phone and tell him to continue.
Are you making Lance?
Okay, are we, I'm sorry for the technical problems here. Are we good? Okay, all right. There's always a glitch, isn't there? So thanks for your patience. I'm Lance Bernard. I'm a planner with HKGI, and I've had the pleasure of working with the county over the last year and a half and helping assist county staff and elected leaders update the comprehensive plan. This plan has been a document that the county has had in place for years, typically updating every 10 years with the last update done in 2008. The plan really is a larger kind of vision document for the county. It provides policy direction on a number of topic areas, specifically looking at land uses in the unincorporated areas, providing direction and guidance on future investments in the parks and trails and transportation facilities, county facilities. It also provides a fair amount of direction on economic development initiatives and really how the county is going to grow over the next 10 to 20 years and providing the implementation steps to get there. So as part of this process, as we talk about comprehensive plans, that may mean a number of different things to the general public or just really what that is. So we wanted to create some branding efforts and some identity behind this plan to generate some excitement. And so as you've seen and others have seen throughout the last year and a half, you've seen the tagline called "Shape Stearns." We've been really popping up at a number of different community events, different meetings with stakeholders, township officials, to really understand how we're going to shape that vision, how are we going to shape the year 2040 for Stearns County. And so this process really has been shaped by you. It's been shaped by the county board, the planning commission, township officials, the general public. It's really been led by your environmental service department. County staff has been very dedicated in making sure that this is a transparent planning process and has focused a lot of their outreach on attending various stakeholder meetings, really engaging township officials. So over that year and a half, staff has attended over 40 meetings, which is a true testament to making sure all voices were heard throughout this planning process. A main part of the process was a steering committee of 25 members. That committee was made up of this board of commissioners, made up of planning commission members, township officials, and various interested parties throughout the county. That group met six times and really provided a lot of kind of the more direction and confirming what we were hearing from the public during our engagement efforts. And just a snapshot of those engagement efforts, as I mentioned, we were really popping up in the county, going to where people were. You know, we were fortunate to wrap up a majority of this engagement prior to COVID-19, so we did have a lot of fun out in the community, going to different events. We did leverage a lot of online engagement tools and certainly amped up more of our online engagement here in March and April to wrap up the plan and get input on the draft plan itself. Throughout that process, we really did hear a lot of different things, some common themes that really evolved out of that public process is just everybody's appreciation for the rural landscapes, the natural amenities, the county parks, or just things that the community and the county really cherishes and wanted to make sure that we were reflecting that in the comprehensive plan. But one of the common themes that really did emerge from this process was the thought of or the ability to eliminate barriers when it comes to land use decisions and to try to create some more flexibility in land use decisions down the road. So from that, we were able to really start to structure this plan a little bit differently. We developed the plan around five key pillar areas, being agriculture, living, nature, business, and connectivity. And really, these five pillars start to help articulate that vision for the county over the next 20 years. And within each pillar, we were able to get a little bit more detailed around some specific topic areas that are important to the county and residents. The plan covers probably over 20, 25 different topic areas, or as we're calling them, focus areas. And so this is just kind of a sample of some of the things that this plan is addressing in more, in more specific detail and providing better policy and guidance direction around these areas. We also wanted to make sure, how do we translate a number of these focus areas from an implementation standpoint? So the comprehensive plan is really relied on pretty heavily when it comes to making future land use decisions in the unincorporated areas. And in the past, the comprehensive plan, maybe lack of better words, were a little bit rigid. It was very prescriptive in what one could do with their land at a parcel-by-parcel level. So for us to try to build in some more flexibility, we needed to kind of pivot a little bit and go more towards a policy-based comprehensive plan that other counties have done. So this is a new approach, but just a different way of looking at how we guide future land use decisions throughout the county. In order to move in that direction and provide that flexibility, we also have to have some guidance and direction on how we're going to interpret those land use decisions. So we've developed a number of tools, processes within the comp plan that start to ask the important questions about how to make better informed land use decisions and how those land use decisions are aligning with the comprehensive plan's goals and policies, how we're going to continue to evaluate things from a natural resource perspective, and what are some of the expectations behind those developments when it comes to development standards, or how we balance land use decisions within the various environments of the county from, you know, an agricultural, rural, suburban, urban environment? And how do we continue then to foster those conversations through engagement with the township boards and other elected bodies throughout the county? So that's just a little bit of a synopsis of how we've developed the plan over the last year and a half. One of the directions that county staff really wanted to see as part of this effort is making sure that we take this plan digitally, that we are able to convert, you know, a written document to a digital format. So we have initially started off with a project website that has now morphed to the actual comprehensive plan from a digital side of things. So there's a lot of great interactive tools and how you can easily navigate through the comp plan and really hone in on the areas that are most important to you or of interest to others. People can easily select which pillar they want to dive more deeply into, and then also a video that provides a snapshot of the overall purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan. So that is live right now. After today's adoption or direction that you guys want to take, we will be then launching kind of the second phase of the website, which essentially is pushing out some of more of the written content to webpages. But we're pretty close right now with what you see online today. So we'll be working on the website. County staff will be looking at finding ways to update some of the official controls to align with the comprehensive plan guidance, focusing on some of those plan directives. And then we'll continue to be relied on as a resource to guide those future investments. And we want this to be a living document. We want this to be something that people gravitate towards, use on a daily basis. So there'll continue to be some outreach and notifying people about the website and how to use this plan to inform their decisions. And in addition to that, we're starting to develop some other kind of useful tools on how people can translate some of these development growth discussions that are within the comprehensive plan to some more useful kind of residential manuals as go-to guides. So I will just wrap up here and just say that this has truly been an awesome experience for me personally, as somebody that had grown up in Stearns County. It was great to kind of get back into the county and reconnect with some old faces and then just really to be part of something that was really truly driven by the steering committee, public input, and the great leadership that you have within your environmental staff. So I will pause there and answer any questions that the group may have. So thank you.
Do we have questions for Lance? My couple of questions I've got. Could you describe that video you spoke of briefly?
Yes, the video is on the project website, and it's about two minutes. And it is just basically an executive summary of explaining what the comprehensive plan is and how we went about updating the plan through the public process. So it's, again, just kind of that snapshot of what we've been up to over the last year and a half.
Okay, so it's publicly available, I take it?
Correct, it is publicly available, and it is on the website right now.
And early in your presentation, you talked about the excitement of the comp plan. In my opinion, that's a contradiction of terms, but if that makes you happy or ray for you. So any other questions from board members? Well, there's.
It's the comment, I don't know Lance, if you're signing off or not, but just thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it. And of course, everybody involved, the 25 members on that team, I just appreciate everybody's participation. You know, sometimes we had to give up nights, whole evenings, or, you know, certain engagements, but just greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to reiterate that this really has been your plan and staff and the townships and the committees that have driven this. I've just been happy to help facilitate it.
I'd say this describes the ideal government on one hand, or trying to come up with something that meets our needs for the next half decade or decade, and at the same time, something like we're living right now just throws those plans in limbo. But we do the best we can. Shelley, what's the next step in this process?
Mr. Chair, I can jump in. Angie Berg with Environmental Services.
Angie Berg.
Yes, so this is a public hearing. We did, we did not have anyone who wanted to join us today and give public testimony. We did have one online comment from Lisa Stummus from May Prairie Township. She had some concerns with their township's idea of growth. We have worked with Lisa before, and definitely I'll follow up with her again and see if we can help on her behalf. With that, we had no other public hearing comments. I would, again, just like to reiterate that the next steps, the process are going to be maybe more of the heavy lifting for the county, at least. We'll be doing most of the zoning ordinance updates on our own with the commissioner's help, with the planning commission's assistance. And we plan on coming back to the county board in September with a proposed implementation plan for moving forward on some of these zoning ordinance amendments. Things such as accessory dwelling units, recreational vehicles in shoreland, some shoreline alteration standards. And then lastly, but probably the most popular, will be rural business. So with that, I think Lance did a great job summing it up. The 2020 plan, which is going to be known for the plan during the pandemic, and also the plan with flexibility. The last plan was in 2008, and that plan really was about more restrictions. And the plan before that, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you were around for that as well, in 1998, that was about being more consistent. So I think of it going from being consistent to increase regulation to being flexible. And so we planned on working out an implementation schedule for the board's consideration. And so with that, we would look at the board closing the public hearing, and if you're so inclined, adopt the ordinance, which will enact the comprehensive plan.
All righty, well, I'd like to close the public hearing. Any objection to doing so? Okay, this public hearing is closed. Relative to the next possible step, which Angie explained, would be adoption. Do you want to do that now? You want to do it at a later date? It's your game plan. What's your choice?
Are you ready for motion?
I might now.
Okay, I will move adoption of ordinance number 603.
We do have a second.
John, second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. District 1?
Aye.
District 2? District 3, I'll come back to 2. Okay, that was District 2 and 3 simultaneously. Being required. District 4, aye. District 5?
Aye.
Steve said aye. Okay. All right. Ever forward, never straight.
Hey, Mr. Chair? Yeah, just really quickly, Lance and Shelley and Angie, I don't know if others got a chance to go on and look at the website, but it really is pretty cool. And I was surprised in the middle of a meeting that somebody said their husband was reading the entire comprehensive plan. This was after we had closed, but they wanted to pull up the website to actually look and see how it worked, so we did. So I think it's pretty user-friendly, and it'll be great once we really help people see the flexibility they should be able to have.
I have to, I have to agree with you, Cheryl. We truly are wonderful.
As my dad would say, we're humble as well.
Humble and wonderful, especially.
Mr. Chair, as we're commenting how wonderful, Mr. Chair, as we're commenting how wonderful we are, as we do construct ordinances, and with the language in the comprehensive plan, I do like it. However, flexibility can be considered relatively vague, I guess, and we have to be careful as we move forward about being consistent, being fair, being responsible. Just real quickly, if we, you know, agree to put a feedlot in at one location, two miles down the route, if we say no, we've got to be able to defend why we're saying no if it's the exact same situation. So just we have to be careful to see that we are treating people fairly and responsibly.
Thank you, Joe, with that declaration of the obvious. Moving right along then, Shelley, we did not act on consent agenda number 10. Steve, would you like to, did you have questions on that? Steve, would you like to, did you have questions on that?
Yeah, well, which was Joe led right into the segue of treating people fairly and consistently. I guess I question why on this solar application, it seemed like it was denied. And my feeling is it's denied because of that LISA score. But yet in the same breath, if you look at what the planning commission's finding for, we have others like this, where you have an irrigated corner that's not irrigated, which to me, this would be an opportunity to put something in that spot, you know, to add value to that farmer. But I guess I don't know what the whole process of the issue is there.
This is unrelated, but an observation. At some point, I would like an explanation of how we're taking, how we're treating ag lands that become solar fields for property tax purposes. But that's for another, another meeting. But what would you suggest going forward, Steve? How should we, what do you want to see happen?
I guess I would like to request that we maybe hold our own public hearing and maybe address, you know, I know the LISA score has always been an issue. And then lately, it's, you know, the request for maybe a more aquarium on these solar gardens, farms. And I had proposed, talked to Shelley a little bit about, you know, this whole LISA score. You know, does it apply when you're looking at a piece of the property that really hasn't been farmed? Because it's dry and sandy or low and wet? You know, should that LISA score really have that big of an impact on the proposal?
I would add if it's small, irregular shaped, et cetera, et cetera, got compromised access. There's a variety of reasons besides soil type we could be taking a look at this. But Steve, you're not a newbie anymore. What do you propose going forward?
I guess I would propose to conduct our own public hearing and maybe look at breaking that LISA score down into the area that's being proposed versus the whole property LISA score.
What do you think? What do you think of Steve's idea, folks?
I would support that. I mean, in spite of the fact it was a 6-0, I think the questions, I had similar questions about this. So it would be helpful to get some more information and for us to try to come to terms with what it's a fraction of the property.
I know.
You can see that they're, they're trying to put it in the area of the property where it's less intrusive than actual ag land. Plus the wildlife part of it, you've got pollinator plots going in, so it's, you know, the fence can be raised. I mean, there's things, a farmer can, if that's a harmful wetland or not a wetland, I mean, the farmer can mow it all off, plow it up, but I mean, there's still wildlife moves where it's going to move. So I guess I would propose we have our own public hearing.
Okay, anybody else want to opine on this?
I'll support Steve.
Okay. Do, we probably have to. Yep.
Okay, I just want to comment some of the reasons, the rationale, why the planning commission did come this way. There were, it's almost like...
Time out, Joe. All we're trying to figure out is whether to have our own public hearing. And your reasons for the planning commission's inclusion would be more appropriate at that time.
All right, I would also agree with you about land use.
Ooh, that's scary.
That's a huge issue as well.
I'm gonna have to go, I'm gonna have to go see my therapist. Anyway, long story short, do we need a motion there or a public hearing on this?
Yes, please.
Steve, go ahead and make a motion.
Yep, I moved this.
All right, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four, aye. Five?
Aye.
Okay, we got a game plan. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yep. Yep.
We still have the rezoning for Painesville Township.
Okay.
So we need to do that. And Angie, if you could address that.
Okay, Angie?
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg. So the next item we'd like to discuss is item number F1. And this is to enact ordinance number 604 to rezone 10 acres in the city of Painesville Township orderly annexation area from transitional 20 and urban expansion to the commercial district. So this one's a bit different because the Stearns County Planning Commission, nor does the county board, have a hearing on such a request. The joint planning board has their own enabling legislation for planning and zoning. And so they conduct their own hearings, they enact their own rezonings. What we're asking you to do today is to honor their request. And what this would do is change the county zoning map, so our zoning map can match what they're using. We see this occasionally, often in Avon, Avon orderly annexation area. And so again, in front of you today is to enact ordinance number 604 and concur with Painesville Township and the City of Painesville Joint Planning Board for rezoning.
Okay. What would, any questions, clarifications, proposed action by board members? What's my pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I will move the recommended action.
Okay, do we have a second?
I would second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four, aye. Five?
Aye.
All right. Okay, anything else? Environmental Services?
Mr. Chair, that covers all of our items.
Alrighty, let's see where I screwed up here in the notes I made to myself. What when you get lost in your own notes, man, it's time to change medication. Anyway, administration, the next item, we'll get away administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We advertised the report commission's appointment. And as you know, you received 27 applications before the meeting of the day last Wednesday, which is what we advertised as the due date, and you received one more since then, coming on Monday. The ad hoc committee is hoping that our board makes at least one appointment prior to its next meeting on campus, which is before your next meeting. And as you know, this has a little bit that may... ...that has we haven't even had an appointment yet. Now, if you can make attention, I'm a little bit disappointed here. That won't include the world. Just probably hold that ad hoc meeting. And you got to feel for what the other people are thinking about their appointments. So I weigh a process, I think I would need this a little bit of order, how you want to proceed. I just, I think I like it here, here how some of you want to see that. And I think we could even take a meeting to do this. And maybe in between meetings, you all could give two or three options. Which would eliminate the field to 10, 15 people. I'm interested in how you want to see that. Maybe you can even make an appointment today, I'm not sure.
The, an idea I had, and you can bat this around. We could appoint one of the county board members as a temporary member to facilitate the process moving forward. And that would give us one person and continuing to review these 28 applicants, develop some criteria, who we select. But and even, that's, that's the short-term idea that I had. Long-term idea, as you look at that group of people, we have a remarkable cross-section of citizenry involved in that. My, my personal bias is towards a member of the business community. And picking the best one is like picking homecoming queen. But nevertheless, that would give us more time to review these applicants. If you want to do that in the short term. Longer term, my point is, is that we obviously have 26, 28 people that are willing to donate time to this effort. And I think that's terrific. How do we keep this group interested? As you look at that, these folks, every, you know, almost every one of them is entirely capable based on their, the things they've done for local government, for charities in the community, et cetera, et cetera, have made a significant contribution to our community. Is there a way we can keep them involved?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I am actually looking at the, going through it. I mean, we have a dear folks who put their name forward that are currently involved in another, another one of our boards or commissions and certainly appreciate their service, and most of them aren't. So how do we keep these folks engaged? Are they interested in other kinds of things that it reinforced when we're reaching out? That perhaps will find a number of people with some great expertise. I guess I was wondering if people, I know I went through and I was able to narrow it down to four. And actually, out of the four, kind of had top two choices, except for, I will say that, you know, we might want to do a, say, narrow it down and then do some interviews, perhaps? I hadn't thought about your idea of the short-term having, whether it's you or somebody else there, but and I, you know, so I don't know if anybody else got a chance to do that. I know Mike, you at one point suggested we could talk about it by a number. Perhaps the thought of sending two or three names and then figuring out, can we agree that perhaps we, in some grouping, would interview those folks?
Even if we come up with a game plan today for selecting somebody, the bottom line is, is let's keep in mind facilitating the process. We're not the only player in the game here. So I think maybe a combination of strategies would be entirely appropriate.
I have some.
What?
I have a suggestion. Well, first of all, I count 29 people. If you look, I think one was missed on the original as I went through them. Between number 17 and 18 on the list, there was, I numbered it 17.5 on mine and you might want to check that out. And then with the, with the new addition, that made 29, then with the one that came in late. But I was thinking about it and I was thinking that maybe each of us could submit 10 names to the administration and they could look and see if there are some that appear in all of them and compare.
I have to admit, I'd suggest a shorter list than that because while there, because there aren't so many, it might take us forever. And Jeff, I certainly like that idea. I mean, I had hoped if we were going to forward, whether it was our top two or three or top five, that there would be some commonalities in there. And if there are several, perhaps again, if we would agree that we could figure out, I mean, we just need to point, obviously. To back to Lisa's point, but I think we ought to be able to narrow it down. There's a whole bunch of people I personally really liked, but there are certainly some folks that in terms of credentials, we might be able to get down, or narrow them down.
I thought about board number two at first, but then I thought, hey, if we go to 10, then there's probably three or four, and then around everybody's list. That was kind of where I was coming from.
Well, I like your idea of each of us submitting a list. And I don't have a preference on the number on that list. And I think your idea is entirely appropriate for selecting a member, a permanent member. What do you want to do to facilitate the process in the short run? What would you, you know, I gave you one possibility, what do you want to do?
I would say it's appropriate that we have the older chair do that in the short run.
And you've also been our ad hoc member.
Well, yeah, I'd like to say that's a good idea. I stepped back from saying brilliant. But yeah, I would, I would support that. I would maybe say, let's go ahead and let's submit five individuals, but let's also rank them so that we do have our number one pick through five. That would just give us kind of a power ranking.
Oh, you want to select five and have a scoring system, each in the, each of us individually? Is that what you're saying, Joe?
Well, that, that way, you know, somebody in particular that stands out, it would make it very easy to put that individual on. And then also do the second one as far as consideration for this second person. We'd also have that information incorporated on the second person.
Okay, how many do we include initially then in our individual list?
I'm only worried if we only submit five, is that the group be all over the board? There might not be anybody in top of all five. But I mean, I...
Ironically, two of mine, if I was doing top five, are from your district, I don't know what that's worth. I, I have to admit, I, I'm worried about having too many. And especially for ranking, I would have a hard time doing that without having a face-to-face conversation with people. So I get your, I get your concern, Jeff, but what if we did five and if they really are all over the place, then Mike comes back to us and says, I need a few more.
Yeah, I think, I think if you, if you start with five...
If we agree with it, I could go along with that, if we agree with it.
Yeah.
I think your point is a, is a very good one.
If there's no, if there's no commonalities by using five, then we can regroup and ask, ask more questions.
Okay, for a long run, appointee, or appointees, the idea is for each of us to submit five. Do you want to just submit them? Or do you want to score them like Joe suggested?
I like the idea of scoring them, just because it may help us, again, going to Jeff's original point with seeing, you know, do we actually have some coming, you know, maybe there's somebody who's most people's top one or two, but it's in everybody's top five.
That's something y'all can live with? Okay, great. And then in the short term, what do you want, folks? You want me to sit in on those?
Yes.
All right, you want me to have, if they take a vote, you want me to have voting authority?
No, uh, Mr. Chair, there, the, the, the ad hoc committee is, is going to meet, but this new commission will be meeting for months until...
Great, okay, all right. So short term, it's me, and then longer term, we go through our list and we score one through five. And from that, bring back your picks and we'll continue to stir the pot on this until we get it down to two.
Do we send those to Mike then?
You might.
That makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
This went way better than I thought. Oh, you guys must be running out of coffee. The...
We do need some more.
Okay, we'll try to hurry up. Okay, sounds like we got a game plan. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll go into closed session to talk about bar. Any issues by commissioners? If not, we'll go...
I got a couple, just a quick couple of questions. First of all, you know, with the COVID-19, some people are really struggling with Wi-Fi. I do hope that for them, the libraries and the city halls are making it available for people to be able to communicate. If their computer goes down, they might not be able to get back, you know, with Wi-Fi and communicate. So just a suggestion could be libraries and the city halls just have...
Uh, their entrance, if they've got a, a closed, uh, password on there so that people that, that, that do need to get information and communicate would have the availability to do that, so, just a suggestion.
Those libraries are, are, are reduced type people, even when they're not in a building. I'm not sure about all the city halls.
The other thing with that, I, I, is that, um, Great River Regional Library, and Lee, you might be able to say more about this, is, um, doing mini-spots, hotspots that either can be checked out or in some areas could affect a, an apartment building or a neighborhood. And there may be something more that, um, as, um, staff is looking at the CARES Act that we could use to leverage some of that, but it's pretty exciting stuff.
Yeah, that's a pretty cool idea.
You know, you pull up a line inside the building and get after it.
We have, we have, uh, an internal committee that is, is, you know, really making, helping, helping make some of the decisions on the CARES Act dollars. And that, that group, um, is, is, is Aaron, Sarah, and Randy and myself. So we will, we will need with the school superintendents throughout the coming. Early next week, we have to talk about some of the issues that have happened. And hopefully, they know, they will know by then, you know, what, what, how schools are going to open a few more details to see just about things like broadband or anything else with the CARES Act that may be able to help them with.
Okay, uh, anything else?
I'm just gonna ask Randy about voting by mail. How are we doing there?
Uh, yeah, my dear, uh, numbers are high, and I think we'll see a lot in the next, um, week here as we get closer to it. But yes, of course, we encourage people to vote absentee to eat the traffic down in the fall, but still, we're, we're at record numbers. I'll, I'll get some numbers up to you there.
Yeah, people can track those, right? So if for some reason they're not seeing it, do they, are they supposed to call you all? Or what, what are they supposed to do?
Um, there's a way, yes, there is a way to track it. We go to the Secretary of State's website, or Google Photos, and then we have a link to the Secretary's Google Play. So yes, your absentee can be tracked. Uh, we're starting to process those today, open those up, and, uh, and recruit. So, yes, we have a lot of absentees, and I think that's good thing.
So about the same, I'm sorry, really quickly, with our challenges that are doing all entirely by mail, are you seeing the same lines, are you seeing the same kind of numbers you saw before? Are they any different?
Um, so we've added, um, I believe, nine mail ballot precincts. We were at twenty-two, and now we're at thirty-one. Um, yeah, so they're coming, uh, mail ballot precincts always have a higher turnout, um, than, than others. So those numbers are also very high.
Okay, thank you.
Randy, on the vote by mail, they don't have to solicit that. Does that come automatically or not?
For mail balloting, right, we send them a ballot. So all the people that are registered get a ballot. Um, we send them to them, they, they don't have to do anything. They're not registered, so if they moved into their location, they should be contacting us to register and to get a ballot. And then those that have, that are mail ballot precincts, they wanna vote, they can come to the Stearns County, um, Service Center on Election Day to vote also. And that's just for the ones that are by mail ballot. They wanna do it in person.
So just to clarify the difference, can you just, um, reiterate perhaps for my ears?
Sure.
The difference between the precincts that have opted for all mail versus those of us who don't live in one of those precincts?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so for typically the, the western side of the county and the smaller areas, a, a lot of those did mail balloting. And so there will be no polling place for them to go to on Election Day, generally. They can always, they can come to the Stearns County Service Center on Election Day to vote. But they all will get a ballot if you're in a mail ballot precinct. And they, they got notices, and that was advertised in various papers. Well, that's mail balloting. They all will get a, a ballot sent to them, and they already have that one. And a lot of them have come back. Those that are not in mail ballot precincts, the majority of the Stearns County residents, they can vote absentee, that requires them to fill out an application to get a ballot. And those numbers are very high, and we do encourage people to do that, to keep the traffic down on Election Day. But those taking them for either citizen to vote or to fill out an application and to apply to get absentee ballot. They can either do that online, by mail, or by stopping into their, um, downtown or on the service center. And then we also are working with six of the, or excuse me, eleven of the largest cities in the county. You can absentee ballot there also. Um, for those cities such as, um, you know, St. Cloud and Wade Park and larger cities, you can vote if you're a citizen of that city, in those cities. If you're a, a citizen of the, the county, um, and so not in mail ballot precincts but still wanna vote in person by absentee, Melrose and, um, the two Stearns County locations is where you can do that. So Melrose has taken any absentee ballots by in-person. And then the two Stearns County locations, downtown and the service center, you can also vote in person. But we would really encourage you to do it, either go online or through the mail app. And of course, you can also call us, and we'll help you get through that.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on, uh, voting questions? If not, uh, we'll go into closed session.
Uh, Lee? Can I just bring up one quick point? I just wanted to recognize, um, Rose Johnson, you know, who was inadvertently killed last week. Um, she is a member of the TRICAP Board, which I sit on. I think she's also on Big Lakes, or was on the Big Lakes City Council. And I just wanted to, uh, recognize her and, and pass on her condolences to her family.
Okay. Okay. Um, her condolences, Rose. Anything else? Just anybody else? Dr. Willie's waving his left hand. He's either got a crick in his shoulder or he's got something to say.
Um, for planning purposes, we were intending to meet with Rhea Webex for your board meetings in August. And so I'm just wondering if there's objection to that or thoughts about that. But, uh, if we can, we know where we're going to meet. It's much easier for us to plan out those meetings. And it impacts how some of our other boards and committees as well.
Webex is calling.
Yeah, I don't know, you know.
Good, Benny.
Yeah, I don't think we have much of a choice.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else then? Otherwise, uh, we'll go into closed session. And, uh, would it be appropriate to take a motion to adjourn once at the conclusion of the closed session?
It would also be a good time for maybe a few minutes break so they can reset things, uh, in the back room, too.
Hey, we can do that. We're gonna take a short break, folks.